Thirty AM. Going to have invocation, I asked Councilor Hord if he would. Start off with the invocation and Council Woods and then Counselor Hilliard. As you know, this is the one year anniversary. The death of George Floyd and wanted. Councilor Hoyt to put some perspective around what we've been dealing with as a country. Over this past year. So morning, Councilor Hord, how are you?
Morning, Mr. President, and good morning to the council and to this August body. I wanted to start off before we invoke the presence of God. A quote from Dr. King. And it states that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. That we are caught up in an inescapable network of mutuality tied to a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly. I think that's a good way for us to start this morning. Because we know that this is a different time and different country that we in and we've all seen. This ugly. Presence of racism and and classism and all. And so. As we invoke the presence of God, I ask that you bow your heads, please. Gracious God, we thank you this day. God, have us to be reminded that whatever affects me also affects you. And Father God, we ask that you bless this council. As we and the mayor, as we continue to lead and to provide for. The avenue of increasing the quality of life and the various districts and communities and certainly in the city. We ask that you continue to. To bless us and heal us. As we have all experienced the pandemic over these last year and a half, so here and some months now. And God, we ask that you bless this council individually and collectively. Give the mayor the leadership, wisdom and knowledge that he needs to lead this city. And God, we thank you for the employees, Lord, that you continue to. Wrap your arms around them and to reassure them whatever besets them that. That if it's sickness, if it's financial freedom, whatever it is, God, we as we beseech you right now. That you will come and meet their needs. Lord, we thank you for this day. A day that we never seen before and we should never see again. We ask that you be with the Floyd family. As we celebrate the anniversary of his death. Continue to uplift his family. Those who have been impacted, the businesses, that community of Minnesota. As they have been impacted by. The upheaval that came as a result of that. But we also thank you for the peace that we now experience. For your God of peace. And we ask all of these blessings. And others who have been succumbed to this kind of violence and this kind of treatment. We lift them up this day. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Mr. Hilliard, before we move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, now if you have a moment of encouragement.
Well, first of all, let me say to my colleagues, to my distinguished fraternity brother. And colleague, Council, I think Councilor Hord has spoken it and said it. Appreciate the tone in which he delivered it. But we're at a cross point in America where it takes more than just a minority of black folks to make a difference. I want to thank my other colleagues and others who fought very hard along with us to make a difference. We know that you care, but it's going to take a lot of people to continue to help us make changes in America. We all love the country that we live in. We know that it's a great country. I've been all over the world, but I'm always glad to come back to America and to Birmingham. I ask God to continue to touch our hearts, to change us so that we may continue to support each other and make a difference in America. Thank you, Councilman Hord, for that beautiful message. Thank you, President Parker, for allowing me. To say the things I've said. May we continue to work together, not just as colleagues, but as Birminghamians and Americans to make a difference in our society. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Councilor Abbott, now if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, if everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And just to finish, Madam Clark, before we do roll call. We did send out a copy of the resolution. Honoring Mr. Floyd and so you'll get an official copy. At a later date, but we want everyone to have that copy and we'll make sure that. We make sure the Floyd family receives it. So. Morning, Madam Clark, how are you?
Good morning, I'm well, how are you?
Doing fine.
Councilmember Abbott, present. Councilmember Hilliard.
Present.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Here.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilmember Smithman.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilmember Woods. Councilmember Woods. President, President Potem Alexander.
Good morning here.
Good morning, and Council President Parker.
Yes, ma'am, here. The need approved for the minutes of December twenty second and December twenty ninth of twenty twenty.
Okay. Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Hilliard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn. Councilmember Smithman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods. President Potem Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Parker.
Aye, okay, the minutes approved. The minutes are not ready for September twenty ninth, twenty twenty. January fifth, twenty twenty one through May eighteenth, twenty twenty one. I read a motion. The council of the city of Birmingham having reviewed the agenda presented for this meeting on May twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. Hereby finds that the proposed actions contained on the agenda to be considered at this meeting constitute essential minimum functions of this body.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember. I'm sorry, Hilliard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods. President Potem Alexander.
Aye.
And Council President Parker.
Aye, okay. Ready for the consent agenda, Madam Clark.
Okay. The consent agenda begins on page. Four with item number six. Page five, item number seven. And we'll go over to page fourteen. Item number ten. Page fifteen. Items eleven, twelve and thirteen. On page sixteen, items fourteen, fifteen, sixteen and seventeen. Over to page seventeen. And we're at items eighteen, nineteen, twenty and twenty one. Page eighteen, items twenty two, twenty three and twenty four. And that completes the consent agenda.
Okay, already, there were a couple of addendums, but. Anybody have any? Take anything on or off?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
We had item twenty five on page eighteen.
I have a question about that, but I can ask it now.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we using the Board of Education as a pass through of some sort on this? Because I noticed the resolution says that we're dealing with the Board of Education. The resolution in the attachments. On item twenty five. I think maybe eleven and twelve. They all say that it's we're going, we're giving the money to the Board of Education. We're working with the Board of Education. Why is that?
I can have Attorney Lawson to answer that question if she is on.
Okay.
This is Yolanda Lawson, I am Councilor Abbott. Um, certain items are not allowed, we're not allowed to contract with certain vendors. Uh, for them to provide certain particular services directly to the Board of Education. So the Board of Education, we we hired the Board of Education to contract with those service providers. And the Board of Education then makes a determination if it's legally allowed for them to contract with that service provider for that particular service. The contract also states that if they are not able to contract with that service provider, that the money should be returned to the city immediately or no less than thirty days.
Okay, so we're not allowed to contract with certain entities? Why? I don't understand. Why not?
If if the service is to be provided to the Board of Education. The city would not be able to provide, I mean, would not be able to contract directly for those particular services to be provided to their service provider.
Well, you confuse the heck out of me, but I, you know, if you say it's legal, then I didn't know we were using the Board of Education as a pass through. So I was surprised to see eleven, twelve and twenty five with giving, giving it to the, but it. If you say it's legal, then I believe you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. That was my only question. So it can go ahead and go on and see.
Okay, number twenty five, okay, all righty. Anybody else?
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
That's all right, but. Councilor Abbott, were you finished? Because I think, Councilor Hoyt.
Well, I just wanted to ask if we could put item four on consent on page three.
Okay, all righty, Councilor Hoyt.
Yeah, I was, I see now it's. Item twelve. That's being sponsored by the council from District Five, I see.
Okay, you're good?
Yeah.
All right, um, on. On number. And we'll just leave like where it is, number nine and number eleven. Leave it like it is. Yes, ma'am.
Before we move on, I have no problem with item ten being on consent. But I would like to see what kind of outreach information we're sending to all the entities that were not selected to be in that. Five, you know, we could only do five city venues. And I would just like to see what's being sent to everyone else so that they can do their own applications. I think Mr. Mitchell told us yesterday that that's how that was going to work. That other entities would be told that they could apply and I just wanted to see what they're being told to do. So if somebody could just send that to us or send it to me if nobody else is interested, I'd like to know.
Mr. President and Council, we'll make sure we send it to the entire council, but we do have the information available.
Okay, good, because a couple of entities have asked me how they do it. How they should do it. And I thought, well, it'd be good for council members to know so we could direct people in the right. Direction. So thank you, that's all.
Okay, so there are other real questions, so Council Abbott, so if there are other entities, I'm just saying, any of the other ones, they can apply. Because you're just trying to get the information for.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to see what they're being told to do. So that if someone, you know, gets left out of the distribution, we can say, here's what you have to do and here's who to contact.
Okay, all righty, okay. And Mr. Mitchell, I think it said, okay, all right, so ten stays on, we're good with that.
Mr. President, no, sir.
You're not good with number ten, okay. Councilor Hoyt?
Well, you know, I thought we were going to get. A very detailed report on the American Rescue Plan.
Counselor, this is, it's not, it's not related to the ARP, this is separate, this is a shut of venues grant. It's separate from the ARP.
And how were they chosen, Mr. Mitchell?
I can try and speak on, I know Kelvin Dacher was hitting this up along with Terry Burrell, but we had some stipulation from the government on the different type of being used that that we could use, especially public entities. And we're all, we were only limited to five, so we chose these five that you see before you. We can give you that checklist and the process and let you see how we chose these particular venues.
Yeah, because I'm wondering, you know. Well, I mean.
Crossplex.
The, yeah, the, I'm thinking about baseball.
Rickwood Field.
Regions or Rickwood?
Rickwood. Just wondering why. They were not included and we know they need some repairs over there.
Yeah, Counselor, like, like I said, I'll show you the guidelines that we got from the Treasury about these particular entities. Because I think you had a stipulation about revenue producing being used and the ones that before you are not really revenue producing entities, they are, you know, open to the public.
Right. Okay, I'm going with your chest, but you know.
Yes, sir.
And, and Councilor, we will, we're working on getting, having a more of an in-depth update and conversation around the American Recovery. Act.
Because I'd like to know, and when these items come before, I can kind of. Yeah, kind of figure out what, you know, what was done and why it was done.
Yes, sir. That was, actually, that was a different program because, you know, it was, they were moving a lot. This was when I think when President Trump was still in office. And this, when that fund was set up, I think it was a twenty five billion dollar fund that was set up. I think that was the last package he passed when he was president. But yes, sir, but separate from that, we will have a follow-up update on the American Recovery. Like that's the phase one and seventy million.
Okay.
All right, yes, sir, we will do that. So we're going to leave ten, you want it on or off? Are you good with it?
That's fine, leave it on.
All right, all right. Others? Okay, all right. Um, Mr. Williams, you have one addendum, did you want that one on? And I had one for travel, one on twenty eight. Did you want number twenty seven? I think that was sent out.
Yeah, if it objects to it.
Okay, twenty seven, twenty eight, okay. All right, yes, ma'am.
I have a question about the travel one. Where are you guys doing? Who are you going to talk to?
Yeah, we are participating in a, some events around, an event that's coming here July third. We're working with the, with some of the artists to work on a vaccination initiative. And so we'll be doing. Meetings with them to see if, or they will be doing some, some PSAs around vaccinations. Before their event that'll be here July third. So we think it'll help us to increase the awareness in the, I think in the crowd from probably from eighteen to thirty five. And so we think it'll be important, the Park Board signed the agreement or approved the agreement last Wednesday. And it'll be a concert this July third and some of the artists, GZ. Let's see, I'll get the list of them, but it's going to probably be seven or eight artists that will be here. And we're working on getting the. Public service announcements to hopefully roll out in the next couple of days. So that's what we'll be meeting with them on that matter.
So with concerts, because I don't know too many places that are doing concerts. How are we going to guarantee that people are going to socially distance everything?
It's going to be at Legion Field. And just like we've been doing all, it's going to probably, the capacity will be about ten to twelve thousand. And we'll socially distance like we've been doing all the other events out at Legion Field.
Okay.
So it's similar to what they did with the Funk Fest where they had, you know, you can take the west side of the stadium and socially distance. With people sitting every other. It, you know, as you go up, you skip a, you skip a seat as you go. Yeah, so we're anticipating probably about ten to fourteen thousand. And we'll be able to use the west side of the stadium to socially distance.
Okay, what's the funding source for it?
It will be out of our, our individual council office, so it'll be GZ, Little Dirk. Young Blue, Musky, so it'll be several others. And you'll see that announcement coming out later on today where the Park Board approved that contract last week. And that'll be July third at Legion Field.
Okay. Low air green.
On this one, no, but, but not on this one, but.
I mean, you know, I, I don't want to get up and shake all the time.
I understand, but, you know, we're doing everything in order to increase the, you know, the. The percentage of residents taking the vaccination shots. And so we think, just like you saw with Coach Saban and others, you know, do PSA's to. You know, try to get the football crowd ready for football season. We're hoping that. Partnering with T Three Entertainment will, will help us to increase the vaccination of, of, you know, of young adults. And that's what we have as part of. Oh, no, 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 that's, that's on the, that was on the Park Board side. The Park Board last week. Provided a stadium agreement.
So, so the Park Board is deciding on what events we have and then we take the money out of where?
To provide, I think that's going to come out of their individual. I guess Legion Field Stadium budget to pay for the employees and stuff. Just like we do all the other events at Legion Field.
Yeah, but all the other events are being decided by one or two people. And the council just hear about it. And I'm on, I'm on the Park and Rec Committee.
Well, they actually, this is just an agreement where they just, they're coming like the Funk Fest and anybody else. They just, just like when the soccer people, Birmingham Legion came, they do a stadium agreement with the facility, just like at the Crossplex. They do an agreement with the facility. And the facility rents out the stadium to individual groups. Okay, all right, good, all right. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, citizen interested in public hearings or request. If so, such item or items will revert to its normal place on the agenda or to business. All matters of permanent operation will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. So we're ready for motion. So, President.
Second. Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods. President Potem Alexander.
Aye.
And Council President Parker.
Aye.
Okay. All right, consent agenda passes. Madam Clark, through to the first item?
The first item is item number one, it's on page two. A resolution relative to the application of Millennium Two LLC for the transfer of an off-premise beer and wine license to be used at M and A Market. Fifteen hundred Eighteenth Street, North Birmingham. And the hearing of our interested parties, this is a public hearing item. Any persons who wish to speak for or against this item may do so by joining the meeting of the full council using the link on the agenda. Please use the hand raise function on WebEx to request to speak to this agenda item. The conference, audio conference number is one, four, one, five, six, five, five, zero, 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 two. Access code, one, eight, seven, one, one, four, zero, five, two, five. If you're calling via telephone, please press star three to request to speak to this agenda item.
Move the item.
Second.
All right, Mr. President. This item did meet all of the requirements and I'm going to have India read the neighborhood form. So everyone knows that the vote was on the neighborhood. Are you on India?
I'm here. Uh, M and A Market went to the Fountain Heights Neighborhood Association on November fourth, twenty twenty. They were in attendance for opposed, resupplied and one abstaining. There's no reason for opposition.
All right, any questions? From the council or public? Seeing none, it's back to you, Mr. President.
Okay, all righty. I'm cooking and ready to vote.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman. Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods. President Potem Alexander.
Aye.
And Council President Parker.
Aye.
Okay, that item passes, next item.
The next item is item number two, also on page two. A resolution relative to the application of Bianca Joy Irving. For a lounge retail looker class one license to be used at the Boss Lounge. Thirty nine, twenty three, Richard Ernich Jr. Boulevard, North Suite Eight. And the hearing of our interested parties, this is a public hearing item. Any persons who wish to speak for or against this item may do so by joining the meeting of the full council using the link provided on the agenda. Please use. Please use the hand raise function on the, on WebEx to request to speak to this agenda item. The audio conference number is one four one five, six five five zero 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 two. Access code one eight seven one one four zero five two five. If you're calling via telephone, please press star three to request to speak to this agenda item.
Move the item.
Okay.
Second.
So, can, real quick, can everyone mute, uh, make sure that you muted your, um, okay, Council Williams?
All right, uh, this item also met all of the requirements, India, if you will, please read the neighborhood forms so people can, uh, vote.
Sure, the Boss Lounge visited the East Birmingham Neighborhood Association on February twentieth, twenty twenty one. Four in attendance, zero opposed or supported.
All right, did any members of the council or the public have questions? Seeing. Yes.
Uh, this is Tim Gambrell. Um, I believe we sent an email this morning, uh, this ca- or this item is gonna be before ZBA on Thursday for a modification for parking. At present, they don't meet, uh, zoning requirements. And they do have a ZBA case scheduled for Thursday though, to request a modification. I don't know if you wanna delay this item a week to hear the results of the ZBA case or what you wanna do.
Yeah, no, y'all did not send an email this morning, but yes, I would definitely want to delay the item. Um, motion to delay for two weeks.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, and clerk, ready?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Hillier? Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods? President Potem Alexander?
Aye.
And Council President Parker?
Aye, okay, well, that item's late two weeks.
Uh, Mr. President and, uh, Madam Clerk, on, I'm gonna ask for a two-week delay also on items three and five, which you're about to read, so I don't know if you need to read the whole thing about the web buttons to click and all that kinda stuff.
Okay.
Anyway.
Item number three. On page three. Is a resolution relative to the application of CRU Birmingham LLC for lounge retail looker class one license to be used at CRU Lounge, twenty three hundred First Avenue, North Birmingham. And the hearing of our interested parties, and you said also item number five.
Yes, ma'am.
On page four, which is a resolution relative to the application of Artifice LLC for special retail liquor license one sixty to be used at Artifice, one oh one Fortieth Street, South Birmingham, and the hearing of our interested parties. So, need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All right.
Two-week delay?
Yeah, two-week delay on item three because they, and, uh, because they haven't been able to meet, uh, fire inspections yet.
The three and five both?
Yes.
Okay.
Both item, both, both same reason, both of them were not able to meet, uh, fire inspection.
Okay, Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Hillier? Councilmember Hillier? Councilmember, oh, okay.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods? I mean, okay. President Potem Alexander?
Aye.
And Council President Parker?
All right, okay, there's, uh, be two-week delay. Next item.
Okay, the next item would be item number eight on page thirteen. A resolution assenting to the vacation of four thousand five hundred thirty-five square feet of right-of-way along Ninth Court North between Fiftieth Street North and Fifty First Street North. Uh, I'm sorry, on behalf of Jose A. Casanova and Danny Summerlin owners, so that the owner can consolidate property and the hearing of our interested parties, this ca- this is case number S U B twenty twenty one zero 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 eighteen. This is a public hearing item. Any persons who wish to speak for or against this item may do so by joining the meeting of the full council using the link provided on the agenda. Please use the hand raise function on WebEx to request to speak to this agenda item. The audio conference number is one four one five, six five five zero 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 two. Access code one eight seven one one four zero five two five. If you're calling via telephone, please press star three to request to speak to this agenda item. So we need a motion.
Hold on. Second.
Councilor Smithman, good morning.
Uh, no, sir, um, is there anybody here that's needs to speak for or against this item in the audience?
Yes, this is Jose Casanova.
Okay, uh, state, well, tell us where you live and just kinda, uh, tell us what you wanna talk about.
Sure, good morning, council, thanks for having me this morning. Uh, Councilman Hoyt, Councilman Hillier, thank you for your words of encouragement this morning, I really appreciate it. Um, I am a resident of Birmingham here, we've been working on a project, um, over in Woodlawn for the past nine months and this little plot of land is, it's backed up into an alleyway and it would help us further our project and help us with the betterment of the Woodlawn area, um, to vacate this property into this parcel. And I appreciate all the help and support in advance, uh, whatever you guys can do, whatever possible. Thank you.
Counselor Smithman, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so can you, Mr. Casanova, can you tell us a little bit more about, um, what you're doing with the property, um, that I've, I've been in the community for twenty years and, um, that particular location, um, to put it gently, there's been some blight there over the years, uh, so can you tell us a little bit more about how you're approving the property?
Sure, over the last nine months, we've put a brand-new roof on it, um, we've, we've worked on the plumbing, we've worked, we've done a, um, brand-new facelift on the interior, we've put the hardwoods, uh, we've done a complete facelift and, um, I don't know how much more I can say, we've, we've done the works at that property, it used to be, uh, for lack of a better term, just kind of an eyesore in the corner across from the, um, across from the, the Sammy's Sandwich Shop and where the new Church of the Highlands is going, uh, we're just trying to do our parts and improve the community. So it's a complete remodel.
It's a multi-family, is that correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
All right, so, um, uh, one of the problems that we have in, in the city of Birmingham is that we have a, a lot of multi-family that, um, don't have the required, uh, dumpster, so, um, there's some other examples nearby in Woodlawn, um, but, uh, it's a, a problem all over the city, um, so I wanna bring that to your attention and, and make sure that, um, uh, you're planning to install or, or have a dumpster there, um, available for your residents. Uh, I think the requirement is any multi-family that has over four units are required, uh, by the city to, to have a dumpster for their residents, obviously that has not been enforced over the years and, and, but it's something that, um, you know, I know all of the council members, uh, want to see enforced.
Sure, um, I'll speak a little to that, we have had and will continue to have a dumpster on the premises. Um, we believe ourselves to go above and beyond, we do pest control monthly, uh, we offer lawn care monthly, we, we pay for the water in the sewer. Um, so we, we really do think that we're going above and beyond for our tenants. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Quinn, is there anyone else from the council that wants to speak?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, I wanted to ask, um, this item says that the owner wants to consolidate property and my question may be for the staff. When a person is consolidating property, d- does that mean that it will automatically be subdivided into one lot after this consolidation is completed?
Uh, Counselor Abbott, uh, this alleyway that ends into their property and it, it almost serves as driveway to their property. Uh, the portion that they're asking to vacate will be, um, combined with the existing lot, so it won't create a new lot, it'll just be combined into the existing lot.
Okay, but would that not require a subdivision case to subdivide a lot?
Yes, ma'am.
Two lots into one lot?
Yes, ma'am, the, the subdivision was approved with that and it's, and the subdivision approval is contingent upon approval by council for the vacation. Once the council approves the vacation, the plat would be recorded and, uh, and the vacation would be noted on the plat. And it's one lot at that time.
Okay, thank you, it was just a question, I, I wondered about the consolidation process, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all, Madam Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, and it says no recommendation from the committee, I know Council Abbott you asked about that, we didn't have a forum at the last P I C meeting, so that's why it says that.
Thank you, I do always wonder why committees have no opinion, so, thanks.
Is there anyone else from the council that has any questions or concerns? Okay, thank you, President Parker, I'll call for the vote.
All right, thank, all right, thank you, and I will say real quick, though, Sammy's, they have the best burgers, uh, in town.
Was that Sammy?
Casanova.
I second that.
We'll have to meet and get a burger one day.
Get me a burger, yeah, they got.
We might have to go over there and just get out in the parking lot and, and.
Yes, that's right.
Best burgers over there, so, yeah, all right, anyway, just got to get you over there. I'll have to meet you over there one day, get a good burger. Okay. Yes.
Counselor. Counselor Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Hillier?
Aye.
Counselor Hoyt?
Yes.
Counselor O'Quinn?
Yes.
Counselor Smithman?
Aye.
Counselor Williams?
Aye.
Uh, Counselor Woods?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, President Potem Alexander?
Aye.
And Council President Parker?
Aye, okay, that item passes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
All right, item number nine that's on page fourteen has been requested to be redrawn by the mayor's office. And then the next item goes all the way to the end, item number twenty-six on page nineteen, which just needs to be read into the record, receiving the emergency purchase notice from the purchasing agent relative to the replacement of hoist ropes on elevator number two in City Hall. And that is it for the agenda.
Okay, all right, thank you, um, ready for, um, I'm sure Counselor Abbott, you want to start us off?
Uh, yes. Uh, thank you, the next budget, uh, virtual budget and finance meeting will be on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one at three thirty P M. Submissions are due on July ninth, excuse me, June ninth by twelve noon. Uh, there are no exceptions, we do have our, um, public hearing about, on the budget on June first at five o'clock. So I want everybody to remember that.
I think it was, I think it's five thirty, I think we had it advertised at five thirty, I think, that's where it was.
Yeah, five thirty, that's.
It's coming off the holiday, so we wanna make sure, yes, ma'am.
Yeah. But anyway, those are my announcements for budget and finance.
Okay, all righty, uh.
President, I have an announcement, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'd like to announce that the Utilities Committee will have a tele-town hall, which is part to continue discussions about the city's, city's newest assistance program. As you know, it was launched a few weeks ago for rent and utilities assistance. So we'll have Mr. Kelvin Datcher on tonight to give citizens more information about that program and it's at six P M. It will be on both the city council and the D seven page, so that's tonight at six P M. Kevin Datcher will be there to discuss, along with other staff, to discuss the city's rent and utilities assistance program, thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee?
President, I do have a, a question for, uh, Potem Alexander.
Sir?
Um, so just a concern that was brought to me by constituents, um, one of our utilities, I'm not sure whether it's A T and T or others, uh, is doing some fiber installation in various, uh, locations around the city. And as part of that installation, they have, um, some spools of fiber that are, they, they've been, you know, sitting in the same location for a couple of months, um, so I would request that, uh, if we could be provided some update from them about their progress and timeline, I'd appreciate that.
Sure, and I'll have, ask my officer as well, reach out to you to get that address where those spools are and, um, you said that was A T and T and Verizon, correct?
Well, I'm not sure.
Think anybody, we're not sure, we'll, we'll follow that, thank you.
Thank you.
President Parker?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, well, I have two things, do we have a graphic together for, um, the budget hearing?
Uh, you mean on the one for July first? I'm sure that'll be coming out, I'm sure today or tomorrow, because I gotta have the call-in number and everything, so. I would, I would anticipate probably by tomorrow you will have that available to put out over the, you know, between now and the weekend, since Monday is a holiday. I'm sure we'll, there'll be press releases and everything.
Okay, thank you, and then my one announcement is that More Than Conqueror's Faith Church will be having that Save Summer event. Um, I'm a supporter of it and I will be a co-vendor with the Literacy Council. Uh, we'll be giving, well, they'll be giving away bikes, helmets, sunglasses and a lot more. Uh, Commissioner Tyson's supporter, my father and other different, um, uh, businesses and governmental officials, it will be tomorrow at six P M at Memorial Park, thank you.
Okay. All right.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would ask for a suspension of the rules, I have a, a note that I wanted to read from one of my constituents, please.
Okay, you're, uh, I think we just have to, um, why, why don't we, uh, just have you, 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 you received, your committee has received a report that you just need to take it in.
Yeah, I, I wanted, I, I wanted to, I wanted to read it.
Okay, we, that's part of your transportation committee report.
Yeah. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, I got, okay, yes, sir, you received, yeah, you had a constituent, yes, sir. Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This, um, email I received, uh, on yesterday says, hello, Councilor Hoyt, it is a very, it is a very heavy heart and great concern that I write to regarding the recent shooting at the King City Mark located fifteen thirty-five Warrior Road in Hensley. My nephew Rodri- Rod, Rod, uh, Darius Bryan was killed on Friday, May the twenty-first and as he was exiting his store, several shots were fired from a passing car, shooting in the direction of those standing in front of the store. My nephew was not intended, was not the intended target. Rod Darius leaves a seven-year-old son, a seven-week-old son, parents, sibling, aunt, uncles, many relatives and friends that loved him dearly. My brother and his wife live about two blocks from the store. And after the shooting, a bystander came to their house to notify them of the shooting. And when my brother Ronald arrived at the scene of the shooting. He saw his son lying on the ground and, and a puddle of blood streaming, uh, from his head. My brother witnessed his son choking on his blood while trying to say his last words. This is. Uh, this is not a way a parent should have to remember the last time they saw their child. There have been several shootings and killings at this particular store. I am pleading with you, the mayor and the entire city council. To call for action at this store on, uh, Warrior, in the Warrior Road area. The number forty-seven would never have a good meaning for me and my family. Why? Because our loved one, Rundarius, Run- Run Darius was the forty-seventh homicide of Birmingham. Please, please, help stop the violence. Put funding in place for, for, uh, police to patrol the area more often. And install more cameras in the area. And most of all, shut down the store that allows loitering. And the killings that take place on their property. Grieving, heartbroken and concerned aunt, Miss Vanessa Bryant Carlisle. I wanted to read that because you and I and others live in this same city. And we've seen an, um. An increase in, in gun violence in this city. And, you know, this is a aunt who's crying out for help. I happened to visit a woman who was shot yesterday. And she thanked God that she is still alive. But this has to stop. And, you know, and this is a disproportionate man. Has had to deal with this gun violence. And people are getting shot and killed. Warrior Road is, is, uh, a mecca. If you will, for persons either getting shot or killed. And one of the reasons is the main affair. All I'm asking is that we increase our presence there. And I would even say, even yesterday, after, uh, the police had left the scene. I went over to visit with, uh, with lady and Thomas. And, and I drove around the neighborhood. And, you know, and they're, they're afraid that somebody's gonna come back and reatt- retaliate again. And there was not a police car in sight. And so it's a serious problem in this community. And we want answers, we want better control, uh, patrol. And I think that's, that's not a high order. That's a small thing to ask. And so that our citizens can, can feel, uh, some sense of security. Um, and some sense of transparency in our community. I want to thank you, sir, for allowing me, uh, to read this letter.
You're muted, counselor.
Can't hear you. Hoyt?
Counselor Hoyt is not actually muted, but it appears that his microphone might have gone out.
Yeah, uh, I don't want him to think we've cut his mic off, um. Can we text him? I, I, yeah, I don't want him to. We're trying to motion that he could hear us so to let him know we couldn't hear him. Has he dropped off? Or?
No, he's still on the meeting, however, a- and, and he is not, his microphone is on, he's not muted currently.
We just text him, just let him know we can't hear him.
Help me address this problem. You know, we keep kicking the can down, what's his name, but it's not, it's not getting any better. It's actually worse. And Lord knows that A D O. That got shot last week, innocent stand by, stand by, uh, stand by. And this woman was in her house, in her chair, yesterday. So I, I need help, I'm pleading. With the mayor and with the council, the chief of police, we tired. We are simply tired. And North Birmingham ought to be tired too. And then like the eastern area ought to be tired. Because these seem to be the places where all this is transpiring. But disproportionately. It is, uh, Hensley. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right.
Uh, Mr. Hoyt? We, Mr. Hoyt? I, I'll give him a call, remember?
Okay, all right. Okay, uh. Any other committee reports? Okay. All right, um. That's it, uh, Council Williams.
Yeah, I'll cut the mute, the mo- there you go.
No, sir, we, we, no, we didn't cut it off. We tried to motion to you that part of your, was that we couldn't hear you, but we were acknowledging, we were trying to get you back on.
Sir?
No, sir, we did not, um.
So you didn't hear what I had to say?
We heard a portion of it.
We heard a portion of it.
But the, the most important part, what we're, we, we, we. Good, Council, we're good. Uh, we heard the. We hear you. And I think Council Williams is going to be giving you a phone call, uh. Think after the meeting. Council Williams?
It's amazing.
Council Williams?
Yeah, motion to the chairman.
Sucker. All in favor, let it be done by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all, everyone, please, need to be safe, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.